Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, that's much better. And welcome to the Violence is Not Normal Town Hall meeting. My name is Dawn Williams and I am the co-chair of the committee and it is a delight to have you come and join in the discussion this afternoon.
Good afternoon. I am Marcus Hughes, co-chair. We're excited to have you join us today for the accumulating event to our eighth annual Week of Nonviolence and Opportunities.
This annual event occurs in cities in 11 states across the United States and the UK. Our multicultural, interfaith, global network of women and good brothers collaborate to organize events of the goal of changing the culture of violence around the world and here in the United States. We have endorsements from Congresswoman Maxine Waters, governors, governors such as Janet T. Mills of the state of Maine, Ralph S. Northam of Virginia, Gretchen Whitmer of Michigan, Tony Evers of Wisconsin, and the Baltimore County Executive John A. Owoski.
Workshops, media events, webinars, congressional workshops, and film screenings were held across the nation to find ways to de-escalate violence, control anger, eliminate racism, and find ways to respond to the implicit bias.
In the past few days, we've lost one of the drum majors for injustice, Congressman Elijah Cummings, who dedicated his life to fight against oppression and advocate for equity for all citizens, particularly those of color, who are marginalized and based on race and social economics.
At this moment, we would like you to bow your heads, to take a moment of silence, to pay tribute to Representative Elijah Cummings and his family, his life commitment to serve.
Okay. Okay.
As we kick off today's program, I'd like to introduce Dr. Stephanie Myers, National Co-Chair of Black Women for Positive Change and Director of the Week of Positive Change: Nonviolence and Opportunities, Dr. Myers.
Thank you, Marcus, and thank you, Dawn, and thank you all for coming out this afternoon to be a part of the eighth annual Week of Positive Change: Nonviolence and Opportunities. We also call it the Week of Nonviolence for short. We know you're here today when you could be out doing other things, having fun, shopping, going to the movies, instead of being here to discuss this painful and difficult subject, the subject of violence in our community. And we know that this violence is happening all over the country, all over the world, and it's affecting our children, our families, our cities, our nation. And daily and hour, daily and hourly, we are all traumatized by looking at the news and hearing it on the radio about this violence, and we've got to find a way to stop it. Today's event is called Violence is Not Normal, and I'm very proud that the idea of today's event was put together by our millennial committee, because we believe in an intergenerational approach to these issues. So when you see Dawn and Marcus, you see our millennial committee represented, and it was their idea to really come up with Violence is Not Normal. I'm also very, very appreciative of the panelists being here. Thank you so much for joining us. You've come from all over the area, Virginia, Maryland, and DC, and we even have Susan Bro and her husband, who came from Charlottesville, to be with us today, so we really appreciate your commitment. Here in the District of Columbia, we are constantly hearing about violence among our youth. We know domestic violence is going on in families. We're very, very traumatized to hear about teenagers even increasing the rate of suicide. And then there's ongoing violence on the metro buses and on the trains and just all over the place. And we're very, very proud that Chief Newsom is here with us, and the chief has really been responsive. Thank you. He was with us a few months ago up on the Hill when we were talking with the Congress about de-escalation of violence legislation, and that's what we need out of law enforcement. Because, chief, you know like we know, there's some crazy things going on around the country, and we have to really push harder to make sure that our law enforcement officers get a higher standard of training and a higher level of understanding and implicit bias. So we thank you for being here. Today, panelists and audience, we are asking you to think of solutions. We're not just here to rehash the same old stuff. You all know the problems like we know them, and we know that our beloved country unfortunately is not a stranger to violence. We know what happened to the Native Americans with genocide. We know what happened with slavery. We know what happened to poor indentured white folks when they first got here. So we know we have to find new ways to eradicate this, and we're very proud of the endorsements that Dawn mentioned from the members of Congress and governors, and we'll be working hard on that. Eric Holder is the honorary chair of the National Positive Change: Nonviolence and Opportunities Week. Congresswoman Gwen Moore and Congresswoman Maxine Waters are the vice chairs, and we extend a special thanks to Michael Peters over here in the audience, who's the CEO of Trusted Inc. and our major sponsor today. We also appreciate the Saint and Street Fighter Foundation, I don't know if there's a representative here, and our partners, the 100 Fathers, Frank Malone, Moms Demand Action. We have a good brother here in a Moms Demand Action shirt. We appreciate your participation. We're just thrilled to have the young people here from the Archbishop Carroll High School, Jim Vance Media Program. The Jewish Community Relations Council was an endorsement, Masid Mohammed Mosque, and the Southern Christian Leadership Council. And of course, our family means everything, and I'm very proud and thankful and grateful to my husband Roy Myers, who's a top supporter of this organization. We appreciate your support, and to all of our good brothers. And a special shout-out to our producer today, Dr. Cherie Ward, our project coordinator and producer. She's probably out there in the hall, working on it. So now, let's move on with this program and remember that today we are here for ideas and solutions, not just to rehash the problems of centuries of violence. We must help people realize that regardless of what the young people are saying, violence is not normal. And yesterday, some kids at Anacostia High School said they think it is normal. Wrong. It's not normal. So thank you for being here, and that is our mission today and every day. Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you all our moderator, Mr. Harold Fisher. Mr. Fisher earned a bachelor degree of science from Morgan State University in Baltimore. He is a member of Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity and a proud native Washingtonian. He worked as a TV news anchor and reporter in several markets around the country. He has written African-American lifestyle articles for the Baltimore Sun. We know him best as the host of the Daily Drum, 6:00 PM weeknights on WHUR. Ladies and gentlemen, our host and moderator for the afternoon, Mr. Harold Fisher.
Thank you all so much. Just for those of you who'd like to listen, I don't want you to get to my radio program too early. It's actually seven o'clock. I don't want anyone to show up and say, "Oh, gosh, that brother doesn't have a job anymore." But I want to thank you all for inviting me to this really important program. I cannot emphasize to you enough just how important this issue is. We are going to move quite efficiently with this program, because we do have some time constraints. Our guests are already well aware of that, so I want to remind you that when we get to the discussion part, you'll have to come to this area right here. You will be given a microphone for your questions and comments. Also, I want to make sure that for those of you who are on social media, please, 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 there's the hashtag right there, #ViolenceIsNotNormal. Let's tweet that out on all of your social media programs or platforms, so that everyone who is not here, who is following you, will have an opportunity to see what we're doing here today. Now, this is a dialogue with the community to raise awareness, share stories and resources for support as well as prevention. Now, I'm a native Washingtonian and a journalist, and I've covered many stories that have been at the center of the news, in our living rooms and communities, and I do share an intense desire to affect change. But I want you all to remember that this town hall is not just about what's happening in Ward Eight, what's happening in DC. This is about what we are going to provide for our children. I live in Baltimore, which has its own problems, but you can go to Miami, or you can go to New Orleans, or you can go to New York, or you can go to Detroit, or you can go to Lanham, or you can go to Fredericksburg. It doesn't matter. What are we telling our children about dealing with violence? No, it is not normal, so let us not normalize violence. Let us normalize civility. Let us normalize second thinking, thinking again about how we speak to each other, how we interact with each other, how we deal with difficult interactions. I think that's one of the things that we really need to focus on today, and one of the things that we are going to hear today. Now, violence is exhibited in many forms, and as we will discuss, so poet Solilyen Green is going to set the tone for the program with her poem, which addresses several issues which contribute to the problem. I want to bring attorney, poet, and actor Solilyen Green to the front, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm pleased to be here and certainly want to be a part of the discussion that has to do with what we're going to do to stop the violence. The title of the piece I'm going to read today, however, is entitled "Son of a Gun." "Son of a Gun." Tuesday, April 20, 1999. The first school massacre lingers on the mind, a killing rampage also cruelled the place, Columbine High School. Teenagers with automatic weapons, fully loaded, conscience completely eroded. Littleton, Colorado forever changed, white male killers were they deranged. Violence impacts our lives, every nook, cranny, and eve. Violence does not deceive. After the violence, legislative silence. Violence graduates from Columbine High School, attends college under its own rules. April 16, 2007. Did the Virginia Tech students go to heaven? NRA, what did it say? Second Amendment will be defended. Ten days before Christmas, 2012 is almost over. That day did not bring the luck of a four-leaf clover. Shooter crazed Newtown dazed. Sandy Hook white male crook elementary school bodies, no one wants to look. These killings do not tip the legislative scale. No gun laws introduced, no gun laws will fail. Americans have the right to buy arms. Guns are coveted, a talisman, a charm. Movies, TV, videos, books, violence will find you, no need to look. Columbine shooting comes full circle in 2018. Another high school shooter, another bad dream. Marjorie Stoneman Douglas high, tears snot, hugs sighs. Will the bodies of dead children ever hold sway? Some say someday. Someday has not come, mass shootings are not done. Violence is written about and described, but killers are not satisfied. In 2019, less than 24 hours in between, Texas, El Paso, Dayton, Ohio. Reasonable gun control laws are routinely rejected. School shooter training is now routinely expected. Mass killings are now on a timeline, traced to one word, Columbine. Yet violence lives throughout American history. The victims change, but it's not a mystery. In the daily victim, violence institutionalized slavery. Casual killings have a centuries-long legacy. Enslaved Africans long to escape. Whippings torture branding rape. The near-decimation of people native to the land, violence and removal on demand. The Indian Removal Act, the Trail of Tears, 1830's violence, terror, fear. Tulsa, Oklahoma, black economic heartbeat. 1921 massacre burned down Black Wall Street. Injustice has been a weapon readily supplied. The continuum of violence cannot be denied. Yet mass killings are not alone, one-on-one violence has consistently grown. Misguided inner-city youth glorify the gun. Rap and killing as if it's fun. Black lives snuffed out one by one. Violence impacts our lives, every nook, cranny, and eve. Violence does not deceive. Perhaps killing, mass murder, is the natural regression. 21st century proof of America's deepening depression. Proof of a violent inheritance long ago begun, an inheritance too few are willing to shun. Instead, they accept the violence and the gun. They pass it on for generations to come. Passed on as a cherished heirloom from father to son. Thank you so much, "Son of a Gun."
Let's have another hand for Solilyen Green, please. Thank you, Ms. Green. Next up, we have the chief of the Metropolitan Police Department, Chief Peter Newsom. He has been working with the department for 30 years and is a decorated officer and attorney. He was appointed chief by Mayor Muriel Bowser in 2017. Let's give a respectful and warm welcome for Metropolitan Police Chief Peter James Newsom.
Hey, Harold, thank you. You know, if I tuned in at 6:00, I would wait the hour to hear your program.
Thank you so much.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I had a very busy schedule when I got the request to come out here today. Why did I come? This conversation is critically important. Dr. Myers and her team at Black Women for Positive Change is a group that I've had the pleasure to interact with before. The thing that I like the most about Dr. Myers and her team is the fact that she's willing to ask the tough questions. She not only requires that we reduce violence here in Washington DC and across the country, but she also requires that the police treat people in a very respectful way, and she's not going to tolerate the police treating people inappropriately, and neither am I. Violence is not normal. One of the things that makes me a little bit nervous, and I think we're in a little bit of a troubling time right now. I see a lot of numbers as the chief of police. You know, I watch these numbers. Right now, if you look at crime numbers across Washington DC, it shows that crime is about the same as it was last year. Let me put that into a little bit of context. That's not going to change much over the next two months. Let me put that in a little context. In 2016 in Washington DC, we had 130 homicides. In 2017, we had 117 homicides. 2018, we had 160 homicides. We're probably going to have more homicides this year than we did last year. People forget where we were and where we've came. The other thing you need to know is that if you look at shootings in 2016, 17, and 18, the numbers were about the same. So the only difference with regards to homicides was the lethality of the shootings. So we had about 550 shootings in our city all three of those years, but homicides went up to 160. Here's the troubling thing for me, is that we're going to increase that 160 number, but also our shootings in our city have gone up significantly. Think about that. There's only 365 days in a year, and we're having more than 550 shootings in Washington DC, and the only difference between a shooting and a homicide is where the bullet hits. It's the only difference. A lot of people don't pay attention to the victims of these shootings who are wheeling themselves around in wheelchairs, or they're in hospital beds. It's almost as tragic as when we lose a life in our city. I'll give you a little bit more context. In the past month, and forgive me if I don't mention a homicide that has touched you personally, these are some of the homicide scenes that I have been to. There was an autistic 24-year-old man inside of his home with his grandmother and his caretaker. Someone came into that home with a gun, took the autistic man's life, took the caretaker's life. A 15-year-old boy was traveling on a train in the middle of the day. It was around noon, up at the Capital South Metro Station. He was stabbed and his life was lost. Not only was his life lost, but the suspect in that case is a 15-year-old girl. You can't tell me that that's not heartbreaking. Over on Half Street in Southwest, 15-year-old boy, middle of the day, and it appears to be another kid right around his age with a high-powered rifle, takes that 15-year-old boy's life. I say that to say is we cannot let violence become normal. At the end of the year, when they say in Washington DC, okay, well, crime was about the same as last year, every single one of these shootings, every single one of these homicides, it's destroying us as a community. And the fact that you have called this meeting, and the fact that you all have shown up for this meeting, particularly the young people from Archbishop Carroll, let's give them a round of applause. And I see this all around the city. You know what that means to me? There are people that care. There are people that are not going to let this become normal. There's so many smart people sitting right here to my left that can help us and give us ideas and suggestions, and you know what we all need to do? We all need to engage. We can't sit back and let this happen. And engaging doesn't mean, the police are not going to solve this problem, no way in the world, it's just not going to happen. Violence is a result of lack of opportunity. Everybody needs to play their role in reducing violence. So I want to thank you, Dr. Myers, for inviting me out here today. This is a critically important discussion. Thank you all for coming, and hopefully we can get some progress, move it us in the right direction. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chief Newsom. Next, there are many voices in the war against violence, and our young people are influenced and impacted the most. Now, how do they internalize, interpret, and introduce their understanding as what keeps the decision alive and vibrant? The next poet shares a young African-American male's perspective and view. Christian C. S. Sutton presents his side of the story through spoken word. C. S.
This one is entitled "Messes for Generations to Come," and it goes something like this. Grit came from experience and hard times. Youngers outside in the corner before the sunrise. Kids involved in the streets, which resulted in lost lives. I'll shed tears too if I lost mine. You could see the struggle and pain in their eyes. Getting it from the corner was their only way to survive. Not enough expressing positivity to see them thrive. All they see is dark days filled with rain, which caused them to inflict pain. Some teens' homes is war zones. The streets don't show love, so their heart they keep closed. The pistol they keep close for whatever that unfolds. This environment has to change, we have to become bold. The code is to keep the street life untold. It was none but a lot of liquor poured and blood spilled on these back streets. I went from having road games to slumming with demons up in that backseat. Road's where they only breed drug traffickers and athletes. I'm here to give hope to every inner-city youth that's fighting a rap sheet. Have you ever had cops pull you over? Homies passed, guy calls for money, and grad rehearsal all happened in the same week while trying to make some extra ends? Just a few years ago, my life was all about living at a butter rim. Night sessions in the gym, waiting for the pan pan. Back when we was out Florida was getting thin, suffering just to get a win. Me and Tay scraped the ball we had for that five-for-ten. If this was four years ago, and you told me I'd be gracing stages and touching lives, I wouldn't even be believing you, because I'm stationed where the good die young and aspirations get shattered before reaching 22. Got a couple of good homies locked, and I lost a few. Hard to tell a young with potential. Stay focused when death, drugs, and violence is what he's accustomed to. I'm doing 80 on the interstate going after my dreams. Death in the family struck early, which caused him to be a man before I even hit the age of 18. I may have rose above my past, but as you can see, it's still hard to erase what I have seen. My purpose is to share my story with the world and build a platform to constructively empower my team. This is not for fame, credit, or figures. I'm here to lead my brothers and sisters to war, something bigger. You can say your bright ideas, I'm more concerned with how it's going to be delivered. I spit with heavy conviction, because new generation world leaders is what I'm hoping to trigger. I'm a seasoned beginner, witty contender, hundred percenter, the beater of people slash community member that strive for social change while giving back to inner cities, no matter the background, origin, or gender. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I hope you all were really listening, because there was a message in that, a very positive message in that. Look at him, grinning. Good job, Christian, good job. Yeah, there's a really positive message, and as I said before, this is so much more about our young people and what kind of world we are going to prepare for them as they get older, so that some of the lyrics that he just shared with us in his piece do not come true for him and some of these young people, but instead, the latter piece where they do become leaders and contributors to this community. So again, Christian, thank you so much. I want to go now to our esteemed group of panelists for this evening, or this afternoon. Their bios are in the program for you to read, so I'm just going to give you just a little bit of who they are prior to their presentations. And this is the way it works. Each speaker is going to give a brief talk, a very brief talk, and at the end of the final presentation, we will welcome your comments and your questions, and you may direct your comments or questions to any one of the members of this panel. Our first speaker is Kent Alfred. He is the Director of Medical Systems for the University of Maryland. He's going to focus primarily on de-escalation and intervention from an organizational perspective. He will also share with us some of the programs and outreach activities to address the issues of violence. Kent.
Welcome to Healthcare 2019.
Ms. Owork, thank you for coming for our third appointment. I do have some unfortunate news. I know that my nurse just recently talked to you and shared that we would have to transition your care out, and that we would also have to make some changes to your medication.
That is ridiculous. I cannot believe that. Oh, my gosh, what are you doing? What are you thinking? Ah!
Okay, thank you. Boy, this is not when the streets, this is in the hospitals now. Nurses and doctors come to work every day to take care of people, but they're under assault. We are the frontline soldiers of violence. They come in, brought in by the emergency petition by police officers, they come in from the streets, we take care of them. However, we know that part of our job could evolve into this. And one of the reasons that people today are escalating to violence among healthcare workers, we have people raising their voice, we have them refusing to be discharged, you have them threatening lawsuits, you have them appearing to be very angry because of the social issues that are in their lives, you have them under the influence of alcohol and drugs. The number-one drug of choice in this area in the DMV is PCP. It increases aggression, violence, and agitation, and each day, we as nurses and doctors have to find a way to de-escalate. And each day, we as nurses and doctors have to find a way to de-escalate. So we do have some tips and choices that we will give you today, and hopefully from this presentation, you'll walk away with some of the things that you can do if this becomes your world. First of all, we want to talk about respecting personal space. James, you want to stand up for a minute? What is a personal space that's safe if engaging someone that potentially could be violent? So why don't you show us what's an intimate space, James, and what's a personal space? So that's considered intimate space, right? If someone is becoming violent, you might want to back up. Okay? That's pretty much a safe space. Now, I want you to demonstrate, how would you stand if someone was to come at you with an act of violence? Okay, go ahead.
You want to turn more sideways to an individual once violence is close to commencing, or you are in danger of being harmed physically. Standing sideways as well, because we do want to face people whenever we're trying to build rapport and relation and keep people calm. But when people are agitated, standing sideways can also give you a way out, can also be a little less threatening as well. If you are male and larger like myself, facing someone and standing as tall and as big as possible can be perceived as aggressive, and that may not be your best outcome. So sometimes, we do want to turn sideways when somebody is directly agitated.
Okay. What about empathy and listening? Is that important if someone is becoming angry? What's your thoughts?
Absolutely. That's paramount to everything, remaining calm. At the end, we can share about some of the skills you can do personally and where you can go for training, so that you learn how to invoke those skills without always having to think about it or refer to something you have to read.
Okay. What if she wanted to tell you how angry she was with you? Do you give her a chance, or do you shut her down?
Yes, you definitely want to give people an opportunity to share, inventing. I would say this should be caveated with whatever your professional location is or your relationship with that person, because it does need to be an appropriate space and conversation. So yes.
Okay. So now, let's deal with the violence when it comes. Why don't you hold this? Okay, probably keep it to us. So, let's stand this way, so we can see us. So let's say James was to grab me. He's a pretty big guy, right? So he grabs my wrist. How would I get away from this? Do I just pull away this guy? I mean, I have the strength, right? So what could I do to get out of this? So what we do in the hospital is that we teach something called CPI, Crisis Prevention Institute. It tells us how to get away when we're being attacked. So in this episode, I would pretty much push into him, use my voice as a weapon, and say, "Help!" Get away, and run.
Right.
Because you've got to get help, you've got to get out of this, what's happening. And that's what we teach. Let's do that again. Audience can see, I do it in slow motion. Kind of pull into him, say, "Help!", and then run away. Okay, that, at least you can get help and support. Let's say he wants to grab my vest or my shirt. So people like to grab shirts, right? That's what they do before the punch comes. So what could I do to get out of this? So I could use and leverage, again, pulling into him, "Help!", and get away. Okay, let's do that again in slow motion. "Help!", get away. The minute he gets your, this, the fist is coming. So you've got to get away and survive the next day.
Training-wise, this is called the Black Block Scream and Run Technique.
Correct. All right. Now, what if the punch comes? This isn't something that happens, right? Someone is throwing a punch? What do you do to survive that? So why don't you try to punch me, James? Not really, but...
Right.
"Help!", block. Don't let them punch you. Use your hands as a weapon, as a defensive mechanism. Let's try that again. "Help!", and run, because I know that you're stronger than me. I've got to get out of here, I've got to get help. Okay? Let's say kick. Let's say we try to do a kick, I'm going to try to kick you, so you kick me. "Help!", and block. Run and get away. Use your voice as a weapon, your biggest weapon is your voice. Scream for help and run away. Okay? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kent. And I was about to call Chief Newsom back for James. Or maybe the sister that was there with him. We have a little conversation about her anger issues. My gracious. Our next panelist has experienced the great loss among us in the fight for justice and equality against white supremacy. Susan Bro is the mother of civil rights activist Heather Hyer. Heather was murdered by a white nationalist while protesting against racism and white supremacy in Charlottesville, Virginia. And today, she's going to share her daughter's story and the positive strides she has made to raise awareness. I give you Susan Bro.
Good afternoon.
Wow. Practical is what I'm all about, and that was definitely a practical demonstration. How many of you learned something from that? Yeah, me too. So, I want to talk to you a little bit about why my daughter is important and why she's not important. What happened in Charlottesville was an awakening for a lot of the country about how violent white supremacists are willing to be in this day and time. And there are many reasons for that, which we don't need to go into today, but let's talk about what you can do when you encounter white supremacists. For one thing, they are human beings. Many of them are very lost and very angry. Does that excuse their hate? Absolutely not. But you can try to talk to them. On the day she was killed, Heather actually tried to talk to some of the white supremacist girls as they were packing up to leave. The governor had already issued a warning and called it an unlawful assembly, told everybody to leave, and Heather, who had been walking with the nonviolent counter protesters all day, decided she would go and talk to some of the girls as they were leaving. One girl she tried to strike up a conversation with and say, "Why are you here? Can you talk to me about why you believe this way? Can you talk to me about why you hate other people?" And the girl just kept saying, "No comment, no comment." Now, that girl is not the one who killed Heather. The person who killed Heather was someone who felt like they had lost the battle that day, and he reacted in anger. He sat at the top of the hill in his car. He had already been down that street. He backed up, sat at the top of the hill, and watched as the crowd of nonviolent protesters, who had not bothered him all day long, came up that street. Now, he knew good and well there were two other cars at the bottom of the hill, because he had followed one of them there. He didn't like what he saw. He didn't like the feeling that he had lost that day. And so he chose to drive his car, accelerated it over two speed bumps down a hill, hitting the car in front of him so fast that he accelerated that car from parked to seventeen miles an hour in zero seconds immediately. My daughter spun through the air, leaving skin and blood on his windshield. Her aorta was ruptured in four places. She was dead before she hit the ground. They didn't know that, so they did CPR, they got her to the ER twenty minutes later. They tried to revive her, not knowing she had been dead for twenty minutes. I'm grateful that my daughter never suffered. I'm grateful that she probably never even knew what happened. But how many parents can say that when their child is murdered? How many parents can say that the violence that took their child did not also cause their child pain? So what we're here to do today is to talk about how we can stop the pain, how we can stop the violence, how we can stop the grieving for the parents. I'm only a blip on the radar of all the parents who have ever lost a child. I hope none of you in here have ever lost a child, but statistically, it's just not possible that there are no one else in this room who has lost a child at some point, whether they were a baby, whether they were an older child, or whatever. So what can we do to deal with this violence? Well, as the Heather Hyer Foundation was formed, I only had a very brief time, we formed the foundation only nine days after she was killed, because people from all over the world were sending us in small amounts of checks and various things. And I said to her supervisor, Alfred Wilson, who was also African-American, "What can we do to solve this? What can we do to do something responsible with this money?" And so we put together the foundation initially to give scholarships to young people who are themselves activists, who are going into fields of study that will help their activism. And so that's been our initial thing. Our next attack on white supremacy and extremism is we have started a youth empowerment program. We just launched it in September, where we have, kids have gotten together to work on projects that they want to do, and the adults are there only to supervise and to help. The adults do not take over, the kids decide what they want to do. So one group is working on police brutality, one group is working on gender identity, doing a podcast, and both of those groups are doing podcasts. One group decided they wanted to work on environmental issues and so forth and so on. And so, we meet once a month with them to make that happen. Like I said, this is a pilot program, because we're hoping to roll this out to other high schools. We've had a lot of requests from high schools around the United States to get this program up and going, and a few from other countries even, and I just said, "Hang on, I'm not quite ready yet. We just started." We're also working on how to have difficult conversations, because in the same way that Heather was able to talk to that young lady that day to try to help her explain, and as a way of explaining, Heather knew darn well, because this is what she did all the time, that if you can get somebody to talk about what they believe, and it looks pretty foolish in the light of day, they'll back off of it. So, we're working now on how to have people talk to one another, how to use the same kind of understanding language. I've heard it said that one political party will call it working on the environment, another political party will call it national resources, and yet they mean exactly the same thing. So let's learn to speak one another's language, let's learn to understand one another, and try to get some understanding. Because in my experience, violence comes out of a sense of frustration, violence comes out of a sense of helplessness, violence comes out of a sense of rage that often comes from not having what you need, not feeling like you're heard, not feeling like you're cared about. So if we can make connections with people, if we can touch points with one another to say what we have in common, then we can find those points of connection. I'm a short, fat, white woman. Most people, when they look at me and I go, "I'm from hillbilly roots," they go, "Uh-huh, yeah, I thought so." I live in a single wide trailer. I've lived in a single wide trailer since 1995. As a schoolteacher with two small children, I was a single mom back then. It's all I could afford. And I don't really have the money to move out, and it's not really a priority. I'm sixty-two, almost sixty-three. I'll be sixty-three in a week. Hey, it's a miracle I made it this long. So, I listen to heavy metal, I like rock, classic rock and roll, and people often look at me and they're surprised, because that's not who they thought I was. If I never opened my mouth, you might not know that about me. I played classical piano for five years. I studied opera in college, very briefly. Wasn't my thing, but I tried it. My point is, if we can allow ourselves to be transparent with other people, we can find those points of connection. If we can find those points of connection, we can sit down and have some conversation with people. We can avoid the hatred, we can avoid the violence, if we can find a way to make those connections. So I encourage you today, as you go out into your neighborhoods, as you go out into your communities, try to talk to your neighbors. I'm not good at that. I've managed to live in a trailer park all those years by kind of keeping to myself. But I can tell you, when I married my current husband, five years ago, six years ago, he made all the friends, because we get out there and we make those points of connection. Allow yourselves to do that. Thank you very much.
Let's give her another hand, please. And Susan, I should say that there is a reason why your daughter was the way she was, and why she showed up at that protest. So, heavy metal notwithstanding?
She liked rap.
Well, there you go. There you go. We're all on the same side. So again, thank you so much, and thank you for coming here to represent your daughter.
Thank you.
When it comes to the law, the rights of the people, accountability, and taking an active stand in courtrooms, Donald Temple is a trailblazer. From teaching law school students to soothing sounds of jazz on WPFW on Wednesday nights, he raises consciousness with...
With regards to our fundamental rights. He is also a proud member of Capoff Asai Fraternity. I think I should remember that, mention that. And he looks good. But more than that, Donald is a trailblazer for the rights of those who have no voice. And so I would like to bring Donald to the podium.
Good afternoon.
First and foremost, I want to say thank you to your daughter and the courage that she exhibited, and I know what she sacrificed and what you sacrificed. And I'd like for us to show our appreciation for Heather. You could do better than that. I was in the seventh grade in Philadelphia, in North Philly, where I'm from, and classes interrupted. Jerry Williams, in the sixth grade, was murdered at Twenty-Ninth and York. It was overwhelming, but it was not uncommon. Fifty years ago, I had a sawed-off shotgun at my head in North Philly. And the person with the sawed-off shotgun lived across the street from me. It was only because I knew him, knew his mother's name, his sister's name, his family, was I able to convince him to take the gun from my head, and it wasn't me who he was after. Violence is devastating. My uncles were Philadelphia policemen, and they started Concerned Black Men forty years ago. I want to acknowledge Frank Malone for what the black men are doing here. Frank, stand up. I want to briefly talk about something a little different, and that's this. I know people who have been murdered, and I know people who have murdered. And most people who live in communities like this, in communities like where I was raised, know them, and they are in our families. The murderers often know their victims and their victims' families. And when we talk about this problem, and you're right in terms of relationships, and I want to focus particularly on our community. And I want to talk about the 21st century and where we're going. And really, I don't want to take a lot of time, but I want to talk about the subject from the helicopter to the ground. See, a lot of us talk about the problem as if these guys in Chicago, and around the corner, and in Detroit, and in New York are from another planet. They could be sitting next to you on the bus. And they could be the nicest people in the world, and they're not foreigners, but we treat them as if they're foreigners. And that's before we even know what they do or where they're from. And the way that we view the problem is oftentimes we over-intellectualize the problem, and we look at it from the helicopter. But oftentimes... But oftentimes, you got to go down to the ground. You got to go down to the ground because the guys that I know, I spoke in Lorton some years ago to 700 men. And the conversation that I had with them was about the fact that when someone is hurt in our community, you hurt them, you hurt their family, and then you hurt yourself and you hurt your family. And it's a vicious cycle. And nobody understood that better than them. And there is nobody better to go on the ground to deal with the problem that we are having in our community than the members of our community. When the policemen in Philadelphia through Concerned Black Men and the firemen decided that there was a problem with the gangs, they went to the community and they interacted. They sat down with the boys, and they talked to them. They spent time with them. So, I want to suggest in the limited time that I have, I certainly don't have the time to talk about historical problems and the socioeconomic problems. But I want to just say practically, there are things that we can do, maybe even a little bit more differently. Maybe we have to stop thinking about it as being like a totally different world and these guys over here that you can't talk to, that they have no humanity, no sensibility. And maybe we need to change the way that we think a little bit about how we approach this problem. Because some of the smartest guys that I know, and I know a lot of smart people, were the guys that I grew up with in North Philadelphia. Many who never went to school, and many of them who served time for a crime, and sometimes a crime of violence. And in that respect, I want to share with you something I think is critical, is that we have to be, two quick thoughts, and I'm going to stop because I now got a window of time. One is we have to be more collaborative. I think it's important that we have people from different backgrounds here, but I don't think we are collaborative enough or do as much as we can because it becomes an intellectual, social, political space. None of us have walked down, or I can't say none of us because I know that's not true, but we haven't walked in those streets with as far as we. We don't connect with people. We don't go into those homes. We don't feel their pain. We don't have those conversations. We have to change the way we even think about approaching the problem. When Mary and Barry was living, I'll close with this. We talked about this. And this was that with crack cocaine, we had an epidemic in our families. The families were destroyed, men were taken out of their homes, and it significantly impacted the black community. We wait till somebody gets in trouble, and then we institutionalize them. But what's missing is that we don't take the opportunity to give our young people the values, the mentorship, the guidance, the intellectual stimulation, the exposure that will make a difference in their lives. And then it becomes an afterthought, after fact. So, what I suggested to Mary and Barry, and it's an idea that I'll share because that was a long time ago. And the idea was that we should take our young brothers and sisters away from their homes and from their communities. Because if I'm from one part of the city and you're from another part of the city or another part of the county, I don't know you, and there's this myth about the distance between us. But if we're waking up together for eight weeks in the same area, on the same farm, and that we have to assume full and complete personal responsibility for our lives during the course of that 168-hour week, for eight weeks, cooking, cleaning, making of your beds, working with each other augmented by mentors, counselors, tutors, people teaching you what Concerned Black Men taught the young people in Philadelphia, chess, being introduced to guys who have been in the system, being introduced to guys who want to contribute. In that eight-week cycle, and also informed by sensitive sensitivity to counseling because young people have these needs, after eight weeks, you will begin an incredible cycle and relationship of men throughout, young boys throughout the region that will then self-perpetuate. My time is over. Harold?
Thank you so much, Donald. And I want to remind our viewers and those who are watching this online, as well as those who are paying attention on social media, that this event is being streamed live on Facebook Live, and it is under Black Women for Positive Change. Again, this is under Black Women for Positive Change on Facebook Live. And again, always remember the hashtag for social media, violence is not normal. Please continue to put that out on your social media platforms. Now, our next panelist is using research to answer some really serious societal questions regarding the impact of violence and incarceration on our youth. Her work directly bridges gaps between families and provides the answers to the question, does the apple fall far from prison? She's a professor of criminology at Howard University. I want to bring to you now Dr. Bahia Mohammed as she shares some of her work with us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today is such a heavy day, such a heavy day because of the topic that we're talking about. But again, we are here briefly to discuss and not reiterate these concerns of violence. You know, the interesting concept is I listened to all of the presentations today and listened to individuals' dialogue about this concern. And I also look around the room and I see the numbers of youth that are actually here. Not that are here, but whose voices are also being heard. I think we have to understand that violence starts within our households. Violence starts within ourselves. And when you fail to realize and recognize our youth, that is the introduction into violence. When you walk down the street and you act like you don't see an individual because of the fear of what you may think they're going to take away from you, you are introducing to them a new lifestyle and a different method that I am fearful and people are fearful of me, and they eventually become good at that. That's the introduction into scaring folk. That's the introduction into theft, into robbery, into all of the things that we talk about that lead to violence. When we don't give our children the rhetoric and the language to be able to speak for themselves, we introduce them into violence. When we lie to our children about the realities of what we've been through, and therefore, we punish them for being us, that's an introduction into violence. We have to allow our children to have voices. We have to allow their stories to be heard. We have to listen to them. We have to love them. We can't put them in front of gadgets that we don't know every app that's on that gadget. Because there are a lot of violent things in the media, on television, that perpetuate cycles of sexual violence, victimization, all of the things that propel individuals into teaching them how to be better criminals. And what are we trying to do? Get a break. You're working 24 hours a day. The children are in school. You're not engaging with the teachers. And then they come home and you yelling at them because they want to talk. And you don't want to. You're tired, you're exhausted, there's no time. That is violence. It is violent to live in a household where you love the individuals that created you and brought you into this world, and they can't look you in your face and tell you the truth about your life, the truth about the reality of what you're living in, gentrification. There are a lot of children, a lot of youth, a lot of college students that don't understand that concept in DC. It becomes violent when they travel all the way from down south to come to an HBCU and walk around the community, and it's not Chocolate City. Is that to say that things don't change? No, it's to say that we have to dialogue. We have to engage in conversation. A lot of the children that I've interviewed, who have parents in prison, tell me all the time, the young black boys that I interview, they end up fighting on the playground because they can't defend themselves verbally. But what do we teach them how to do? Be real strong. And what happens when they get incarcerated? They're lifting all of these different weights and doing a million pushups, and they're coming out really buff and big, and there's nothing in their brains.
Nothing.
Nothing. That's violence. We are the first educators. We are the ones that are here to love our children. And the things that are missing are not the things that cost a whole lot of money. It's the things that are free. It's the things that we don't even think about, we don't even second guess, we don't even consider because we're on that airplane that you were talking about and not on the ground. You got to walk in these communities. You can't be afraid of the youth. That super predator myth, some of the things that we need to do is to get it out of our households. You talking about the world being afraid of our youth and things that they see on the media, but you are afraid of your own children. And at the end of the day, could you imagine what it feels like to live in that fear? I teach at the university. A lot of the students come in, and they're honest with me because I'm a criminologist. I take all of my students to learn about the criminal justice system inside of the facility. Half of the students are incarcerated, the other half are matriculated at the university. We not going to lie in here.
Don't. Please don't.
We are going to tell the truth about what's going on. We're going to read this literature. You're going to have rhetoric and language so that you know when somebody tell you, your mama ain't crap, or I'm going to take your girlfriend, or all of these different things that lives are being lost over. You talking about an iPhone? A gadget. The same gadget that we're throwing in front of our two-year-olds, three-year-olds, and four-year-olds without any dialogue and not preparing them that when they're walking down the street, they could be a victim too. At the end of the day, people are fighting because they don't have that voice. And I'd rather punch you in your face, shoot you with a gun because I don't know how to say what I feel. If you give them the rhetoric, the rhetoric becomes the bullet. And it's a different way of fighting. We have to get those voices back. And we know during the time of enslavement that the first thing that was taken was what? Your voice. And that's the one thing that we are not fighting, to give to our youth. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Mohammed. Let's give her another hand, please. Powerful sister, really, really powerful sister. She's been on my program several times, and I'm always in awe with her passion and the thought processes and the things that she thinks about just when I think I know everything. She is just really a magnificent part of the Howard University and indeed, the broader DC community. Finally, another very powerful sister. And I want you to really pay attention to what she's about to share. She is one of the most transparent people that I have met in the fight as it relates to violence, but more specifically, domestic violence. Queen Afie has been the victim and the perpetrator of domestic violence. And she is now a counselor who heals families and individuals and communities through counseling as a way to be a part of the solution and not the problem. And she brings her grassroots grit to any conversation on violence. I bring you now Queen Afie.
Thank you so much. Thank you for inviting me here today. Thank all of the panelists. Oh, my God, so much good energy up here. Now, I might have to be the bad girl right now. But like my sister said, we not going to lie in here. Violence is normal. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It's real normal. I was the victim and the abuser in a relationship. Linked back to what? My household. Linked back to the dinner table and everything that I learned there at my dinner table. We didn't sit down and have dialogue. We had verbal abuse conversations. That's how we communicate. Nobody don't really want to hear, you know, parents specifically don't really want to hear what the children have to say because that's a question about parenting. And I cook and clean for you and run your bad water, and you not going to talk to me like that. The whole time, the child could really be going through something. But we don't hear it because we get on defense as parents. You know goodness well, we don't sit at that table talking about how you doing and how you feel. And we all scattered out in the household anyway. And then we got the single-family home where mom is trying to be the mother and the father. You got single families where the dad is trying to be the mother and the father. I'm educating women, men, teens, boys, and girls that are victims and abusers. How are we going to end violence if we're not talking to abusers? There's no program for me as an abuser. Jail, yeah. But anything to put in my brain and get my prefrontal cortex going to reprogram, no. So, what do I do? I continue in what is normal. Number one, verbal abuse. Then we slip right into emotional abuse. Because now what you said to me, I'm in my room crying every night, cutting. I'm having thoughts of killing myself because I can't cope with it. It's starting to get on the inside. And the object of the abuse is to get on the inside of you. I don't isolate you from your mother and your father and them. I don't do that. I isolate you from you. Then you isolate yourself. See, because domestic violence is a secret. No, nobody don't get to know what's going on in my household because we're going to my household, stay in my household. We going to just sweep that under the rug. You don't even have to worry about that. But that child's sitting at the dinner table with the molester right there. This is ridiculous, what is happening in these households. We got parents who are just jacked up, all the way up. We got brotherhood who are not emotionally intelligent at all. That's why you always go, I'm good. How you doing? I'm good, Queen. I'm straight. I got mine together. I'm straight, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. They always good, 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 good. Good mean bad. Because if you can't put word to feeling, I'm questioning your prefrontal cortex. I'm questioning you. Our men are so broken because they've been told, shut up, you not no punk. I'm not raising a punk. You not going to make me look like a punk. I don't raise punks. I don't raise suckers. So, what you raising? And you talking about the violence going in. Violence now. Violence is normal. And you need help. Learning a new way from a brain standpoint, how to reprogram that brain and get them circuits in there running that when something is wrong with you, you got a word to feeling. I ask children all the time, how would you conceive? How would you conceive? They don't even know. You not doing your job. You not doing your job when the child does not know how they were conceived. how they were conceived. Now, you take that to the bank and cash it. Now, on July 30th of 2016, July 30th of 2016, my daughter was shot in the head. This is the washcloth that he used to try to bring her back to life. Why do these young people get in these relationships? Nineteen years old. He 21, 20. I'm telling her, "Look, baby girl, I was the victim and the abuser." She knew who I was. I opened up and tell my daughter what's really going on here. But I couldn't tell her, "He a bum. He stupid." I had to say, "Baby, you got to look at these behaviors now." I had to be an advocate. I couldn't even be her mother. Get mad and get angry about the situation. So you can stop getting mad and angry at victims now. You waiting to see the marks and domestic violence don't even start right there. But you ask somebody, "Let me see the marks." And if the marks ain't there, that don't solidify abuse. It starts on verbal. It's verbally that I get into the mind of the victim, male victim at that because I'm an abuser. Tell America that. I get into your mind. I don't care about you. This young boy, he knew what he could do to my daughter. You better know the abuser know what they can do to their victim. You can stop telling victims, "Just leave now," too. Because all you doing is setting them up to be killed. Because the abuser know everywhere my victim at. The teen boys and girls know where each others are. They know how to meet each other when you not around. And let me ask the teens something. How do we start balance? Because y'all know y'all friends carry guns and y'all know who about to get shot and y'all know where they about to get shot at. You just seen a gun. You just seen a knife. All of y'all know that what's going on. Go talk. Go talk. But you ain't gonna tell it though. Because I don't snitch. I don't run it down who doing something. I don't snitch on nobody. Nah, that ain't me. That ain't my persona. That's why it ain't gonna change. Because you know who's committing the acts. Or you know somebody that knows somebody that knows somebody who doing it. Thank y'all for letting me share.
Thank you, Queen Afie. As I said, she's a very, very transparent person. Grassroots, not only in the work that she does, but the grassroots work that goes on internally. Because if you are an abuser or if you have been abused, that work still goes on. Am I right about that?
Right.
Well, now it's time for you to share your thoughts, for you to ask questions, for you to address what's happening in your community, what's happening internally. And so I need to lay some ground rules quickly. We have about 45 minutes. Please make your comments short and to the point. Please ask your questions. We don't want people to ramble on like it appears that I'm doing right now. We want to make sure that we are clear and concise in our comments. So I'd like for you, when you take the microphone, please identify yourself, where you're from, and then you can direct your questions to whomever you like. First up, this gentleman right here, please.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Thank you for coming into the community. It's a lot of people doing a lot of talk, but they not in the community doing the work. I want to tell the people who are in this community right now doing this work, Frank Muhammad, stand up. The Brothers Huddle. Southwest, doing the work. Akila, stand up. Malua High School, working with the young people. Where did Chris go? Jones, stand up. Hundred Fathers. What I want to talk about is reactionary.
And before you say another word, let's find out who you are for those who are not familiar.
I'm Frank Malone. I'm a commissioner for the city for the Fathers Men and Boys Commission. And I started that with Marion Berry four years ago. I also head up the 100 Fathers Incorporated. And I run rites of passage, boyhood to manhood in the schools all over the region. I'm a certified master trainer. Mr. Donald Temple is the Father of the Year in the District of Columbia. At Union Temple, we elected him Father of the Year. All right? So I train men to train young men. I want to talk to you about healing because hurt people hurt people.
You have one minute because we've got a lot of people. So please, let's get to the point.
Reactionary, something we missed today. Reactionary masculinity syndrome. That's what's wrong with many of our young men. And if we can give them love, connection, engagement, enlightenment, and empowerment, we can transform their lives. And so I wanted to bring that up because that wasn't something that we touched on today. But I want to say the people I talked about are healing our community right now. We're at Malua High School and we got young men hungering and thirsting for real men, real women, strong women to stand up and train them. I'm up.
Dr. Muhammad, can you briefly address what he was talking about? Because I think that may be something that maybe... You're bailiwick, please.
I think, I mean, absolutely. Everything that you're saying is true. Individuals are in the community and individuals are doing the work. A lot of the times, you find that those individuals and their work is not highlighted. But I think that that doesn't mean that the work does not need to be continued and that we also need to build that community of support, that those individuals that are on the platform and those individuals that are not. Now, I'm speaking and introducing you. Now, I'm introducing your work throughout those sort of things. So I think it's still important for that unity and community that we go back to that tribe. And it's absolutely correct what you're saying. The youth are thirsty. They're hungry. They're looking for it. They have these strong desires. You hear it. I see it in the juvenile facility where I teach my classes there. I see it in the prisons. I see it on the streets. I even take my classes and I do corner side lectures. So I lecture in the middle of the hood and inviting community members to come out and engage kind of in the dialogue. So the work is being done. The issue is, is that we not holding hands. We don't hold hands. For whatever that reason is, it's kind of like, you know, I want to one-up on you. So I want to have that one-up like, "Oh, I'm in the community. You up there." But we doing the real work. It's all real work. But at the end of the day, if we triangulate and utilize our resources more successfully, I think we would be more productive. But that also starts with self-hate. You know, the same love that you talk about, a lot of us hate ourselves. So I would rather, you know, bash you than come and work with you. Or if I make it here, maybe I'll lose something by coming to engage with you. I think a big piece of what you're talking about connects with the disconnect between the older individuals and the young.
Okay.
It's a huge disconnect.
Thank you, Dr. Muhammad. Next person, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Umar Abdul Malik. I'm a part of the Brothers Huddle, Black and Nice Incorporated. I teach chess to motivate and stimulate our youth. And there's a lot of things that we missing here. It's about unification of us as black people around the world, starting locally. And the thing that we missing is the spiritual essence that our young brothers are missing. They don't know who they are culturally or spiritually. That's where we got to start from. We got to plant seeds of cultivation so they can open up to who they are. Because this temple here is where the Creator lies and that's what they got to realize. See, if they don't know who they are, they gonna be socially engineered to be predatory and animalistic. That's what's happening. That's what we missing. That's what we got to speak about, about the racism in this system that is the root cause of it all. So through social engineering, our youth is like that. And everything that was said is true, but we got to start from the root. The root of this whole, I say, I would say United Snakes of hypocrisy, but I ain't gonna say that. But what I'll say in the call of state and the criminal enterprise, that what's going on is by design. We are under attack. Our youth mostly because they are our future. That's the man and the woman, the sister and the brother. And it's got to be family coming together. We got to unify because we got to stop telling them the lies.
Thank you. Anyone want to address that spiritual connection? Go ahead, Queen Afie.
He said, "The spiritual connection." Let me get back to that. But I heard him sort of kind of get around to the culture. Yes, I think a lot of us do know, you know, some of our culture, but I'm thinking more DNA. When you say go back to the root, I'm thinking DNA. Many of us do not know our DNA. We don't know what we're connected to from our blood. Much less what civil rights got going on. We got to find out at the dinner table who we connected to. Mommy and daddy. This is important. These children don't know who they are from a DNA perspective. You're 99.5% of your mother and you're 99.5% of your father. Are you learning, mother and father? Do you have that advantage? Because if you don't, it's a disadvantage. You're not whole. You're missing a whole half of you that you begin to search for out there in other men, other women. But it will never make you whole. You got to start researching your own DNA. Who, what, when, where, why, and how was I conceived? Many of you don't know that.
Anyone else want to comment on that? The cultural connectivity? Anyone else? Okay. Can I have another person from the audience who wants to make a comment? Let me have your name, please, and where you're from.
Hi, how are you doing today? My name is Cynthia Hale. I'm with the Domestic Violence Rally of 2019. I just recently did a rally here in the Washington Capitol. And not only there, but in Uganda and Sierra Leone. And I have them nationally and internationally. And my question is this, is that I love the way that you guys are talking about, not only here in your community. But my question is this, is that is that if, what you guys are doing is, is that if you're not spreading it, what are you doing about spreading empathy? And, you know, being able to empathize with your children? How do we spread empathy here so that your children can understand empathy? You know, because that's how we understand the experience of empathy before it becomes an issue of sociopath, of narcissism, of an issue of that. Because we understand that empathy, before we don't understand empathy, it becomes a sociopathic, a narcissism issue. You know, we saw that when we went to when we went to Sierra Leone, we saw a girl who was eight years old that was being raped by three men because there was an issue of narcissism. They didn't have empathy.
Before, because I know Queen Afie wants to speak to that. But Susan, do you have some thoughts on that? As a parent, how you raised Heather to empathize with others who were having their challenges? Please, go right ahead.
I had actually written a couple of children's books about this, but the publisher says they don't want to talk to me till I write an adult book. So empathy in children, part of that, of course, is getting to know yourself, getting to know, as Queen Afie talks about, getting to know your family, know what your personal values are. But we also made a point to always try to reach out to others. So even if we didn't have much, if I could buy a bag of oranges and a block of cheese and a box of crackers, we would make up gift packs to take to the neighbors. And the kids and I would walk and they would knock on the neighbor's door at Christmas time and they might get an orange and a chunk of cheese wrapped in pretty cellophane and a stack of crackers. But we always made something to give to others and to give to neighbors. And I worry, even watching with my grandchildren, God love them, I don't see that happening with today's youth very often. They are handed the screen because it's, you know, mom and dad are exhausted. And I get that. I always work two or three jobs myself. But we have to make that effort to show kids outside of our family what we can do for others, even if we're hurting ourselves. A little bit of that sacrifice can go a long way just to show your kids how to think about others than just yourself.
Queen, you next. And then James Drake. I want James to be a part of this comment as well.
Yeah, I'm thinking words. Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking words. Words. The children do not have the word bank that they need to be able to empathize. They don't have the word bank. Calculate. We don't talk about calculate at the dinner table. Secrets. We don't talk about secrets at the dinner table. Unconscious. We don't talk about this at the dinner table. They don't have the words to associate with feeling.
James Drake, and I need to reintroduce you also because Kent left, but you are the Deputy Director for the Prince George's County Crisis and Response Team, so please, go right ahead.
Yeah, so thank you for having me. I had to step in for Kent. We work together tightly because he is the Behavioral Health Director at two hospitals at, in PG County, and so I'm also, we're always working with together to try to reduce crisis and keep people safe and get them connected. I agree full-heartedly with you, with the conversation has had. You definitely have to educate our youth to have more words that connect to feelings and emotions, even as such as a simple idea as having cue cards or having a deck of cards. There are so many different games you can pick up on Amazon that will have discussion starters that you can have. I would also say we can do the same in classrooms. There's something called a respectful model. It comes, um, from, uh, a cultural competence background. You can get that on Amazon or cards. You can literally just Google that up, introduce that in your classroom, and you can do role play, skits, and have conversations about cultural competence in your classroom or in your home.
Thank you. And before we bring this young lady up, I, I wanted to share something with you. I said in the beginning, I believe I said this, I have a daughter, she is a senior at Howard University right now. But when she was a young child, she was about to head to high school and she was graduating from middle school, there was a, for the first time, she went to St. Columba out in Upper Marlboro, and for the first year, they had an award named after a child who died of cancer. And my daughter received that first award. And her mother and I, we were quite surprised because, as was she, because she didn't know. But one of the reasons that she received that award, because she was a sympathetic, empathetic person, because my daughter is a type one diabetic. She is on insulin and will be for the rest of her life, barring any medical miracles or advances. But one of the things that I would say to parents is ask your children, when they tell you something or share something with you about something that is happening in school, to ask a simple question, "Well, dear, how did that make you feel?"
Right.
And then measure and gauge their reaction and have a discussion. That is, that dinner table discussion, and even now, as a twenty-one-year-old young woman, I can't even believe I'm saying that. I still ask her, "How does whatever it happens to be, how does it make her feel?" And I'm still gauging that as a father and I think as parents, that will go a long way to empathizing, empathizing with people in your immediate community, your household, and your community school, or wherever, wherever it happens to be. Okay. Next question or comment. One of my favorite people, this young lady, and I go way back to the beginning of this program, one of my favorite people. Here, go ahead, sweetie.
Hi, my name is Yegelmo Carey, and I am part of the Jim Vance Media Program at Archbishop Carroll High School. And My question is more so directed towards, um, Ms. Queen Afi.
Yes.
And as a mother who had a daughter who was a victim of domestic abuse, what is one way you can sort of guide an individual who's associated with somebody who's capable?
Stay. Cooperate. Do not leave. Stay. Stop telling victims to leave the relationship because their chances of dying go way up. Everything that a victim is going to do needs to be in secret, and I'm telling you as the abuser. No abuser ain't gonna get up here and tell you this. Anything that a victim do needs to be in secret. Everything must appear the same to the abuser. The victim, once she has or he has decided to leave, they will start to devise a plan, their plan, to escape the relationship and never return. Because the going back and forth, the victim gonna end up dead.
James, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, and to add, I know we all have our cell phones, pull them out. I want to give you a resource you may already be aware of, the Crisis Text Line. It is a national line. It does have a website. It is six digits. Please enter this in your phones now, seven four one, seven four one. It is an anonymous resource that is nationally recognized and operated. It sends an individual personal counselor that contacts you by text. It is completely anonymous. However, if there is a immediate safety risk situation that is proposed in the text, it can ping the phone to law enforcement if it's an immediate need. However, the base of that is to provide resources and counseling and support in secret, privately, and anonymously. There are several other ones I can give to about other things, but that is one of the best, and at least from what I've seen since my stay in this area and in this county, is that especially when you have youth or young adults to early, uh, middle-aged folk, but from fourteen to thirty-four, we have a high return on usage, where people are more likely to respond to something that is anonymous and invasive and coming through a form of social media than they are to call, talk, or go seek out resources for themselves.
I pay the phone bill though. I'm the abuser, I pay the phone bill.
Right.
I watch everything my victim do.
So with that in mind, there are other apps and resources too that disguise what the app is. They show up as a weather report, and so I can give some of those too. So depending on your situation, they're not everything. It doesn't exclude. I'm sure there's always an outlier out there that can present a dangerous situation, but there are some resources and some things that are happening that are trying to address just those issues. So there's one literally called, an app called Stay Alive. There's an app called Bright Sky. There's an app called Aspire, A-S-P-I-R-E. You can look those up, where not only do they provide the support and services that are anonymous, but they also put the technology into disguising what that app is and what it shows up as well.
I, I, I want to also clarify something because on the issue of domestic violence, and Queen, you and I have discussed this, uh, quite a bit on, on my program, and we need to make sure that for those people who are victims of domestic violence, that are in the household now and are looking for a way to escape the domestic violence, when you have someone who is, who, who is an abuser, who is not seeking counseling? What do you recommend for that woman or, or man, but a woman, for example, who may be married or living with a boyfriend or, or a, a life partner, who is constantly being abused, physically abused, and they are trying to, to remove themselves from that situation? How do they do that?
You have to work in secret.
What do you mean by that? When you say work in secret, what does that mean?
And it really shouldn't be a lot of apps and a lot of phone numbers and all that because the abuser is smart. I know everything that my victim is going to do. I know where she's at, I know where he's at.
So how, how does that in the case of a woman?
They need to work one-on-one.
What do you mean by that?
One-on-one conversation with someone that you know may have been through it or is very transparent about some things, and someone telling you not to leave because you know you're gonna be killed. So you want to do the opposite of that to help the victim really get conscious about what they're in, because remember, it's normal for me. I'm in love. This is what we do, love. So we gotta really help the victim get conscious and identify that it is domestic violence. That's not your baby father no more. That's not your baby mother. This is domestic violence that you're in. They not even conscious about that half the time. And when they do get into these fights and stuff, they just want to stop for the moment. I just need it to stop right now, not long term. So when that victim say that I want help, I'm ready to go, they gonna work consistently on devising that plan to get out and never return.
So you're saying, there, there, so you need to devise a plan?
You need to have a plan.
And you need to have a foundation and a way to also be protected once you do leave?
I say arm yourself. Because I
Well, let me, and let, and
When I say that
Hold on, considering, hold on, because considering where we are with this conversation.
When I say that
Arm yourself with what?
You, there's a, um, place called Damsunin Defense, okay? And they help with mace and things of that, so not a weapon, mace or anything like that to kind of protect yourself, because the abuser will roll up on that victim and strangle her or strangle him, do any, put a knife. We just saw the young boy got stabbed in the, in the train, you know? So you really do have to look out for yourself because the abuser, I mean, he, that person know where you are.
And Donald, let me ask you before I take the next person on the floor. Your suggestion from a legal point of view, what is, what can the victim of domestic abuse do to make sure, in this case, a woman, to protect herself if she is able to devise a plan to leave that residence and find a place that is safe? How do you remove yourself or, or protect yourself from that abuser who may be severely violent?
I, I can't even begin to answer that question. And I certainly couldn't begin to answer it publicly, uh, not no specific circumstances. You know, I think those situations are very unique and peculiar, and it's not in my, in my, my wheelhouse, so to speak. So I, I really couldn't offer you guidance. That's not the area that I practice in.
Uh, before I move to the next person, anybody else want to comment on this, protecting victims of domestic violence? Are we straight on that? We want to move on? Okay. Next person.
I'd like to come up with a, 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 a
Hold on, one second. You don't, okay, well, I'm coming to you.
What I was thinking is that, what you're saying, unless somebody has really decided that they are going to leave, then they don't need to keep going back and forth. They need, like you said, their person needs to devise a plan
Right.
And do it in secret. And when they decide to leave, to leave and not go back, like what she said, people just want some help for a moment. They want it to stop right then and then, people know how to cajole you and make you feel good after they, and, and beg for forgiveness and whatever. And then you look around, it's happening again, and like you said, it's, you can keep going back until you get killed. So I think that what you're saying is that if you plan to leave, leave, but don't be telling everybody and calling a lot of numbers
That's right, that's right. You can't do that as a, you know, as an abuser.
Thank you so much.
You, you, I'm watching my victim constantly. That's what you guys need to understand. I'm telling you this as the abuser. So yes, I'm gonna carry some mace on me in case this person wrote them, because the restraining order is just a piece of paper.
But thank you, Queen. I, I want to take another
That's all it is.
I want to take another person. Next person, please. Your name and, uh, where are you from? Who you representing?
My name is Ronald Bethay. I'm representing myself. I brought my wife, Dr. Gwendolyn Bethay to this. I almost didn't come. I spent fifteen years DC public school system as a substitute teacher back in the seventies and eighties, and I drove a cab for forty-four years at night. I worked nothing but far southeast Washington DC. Simple city, berry farms. I took black folks home. The problem is, when you set back and we allow our local politicians to sell our interests down the drain to for the developers, and we get rid of all of our black male teachers, I understand. But Willie Stewart from Anacostia High School, who used to coach, who was a surrogate father, who saved thousands of lives, and Bob Haddon at HD Woodson would call me at twelve o'clock midnight, because that's the time I would get in my cab and drive to five in the morning.
That's right.
The problem is, we talking about gadgets. You cannot get it done unless you have people from east of this river who gives a damn about our kids. See, we don't care. Y'all say y'all gonna keep it ripped, y'all get the funding to come over here and talk about this, but if you don't have no men in these schools
That's right.
Other than a janitor and a physical education instructor. And I was in one school right near Howard University, and a teacher came in in drag. I just happened to be sent. I ran him out to school. Where would we allow folks who don't look like us, would allow a drag queen to come to school to teach our kids? See, these are issues that we ain't trying to deal with. We trying to cover it up. Yes, racism and everything else, but welcome to the new Mississippi.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. Next person, please.
Hi, I'm Alena Wheeler from the Jim Vance Media Program at Archbishop Carroll, and my question is directed more at Dr. Muhammad. So for girls my age, normally it's hard to speak whatever you feel or say how you feel or tell the truth on how you feel or to find a path of what you want to do. So what made you decide on what you want to do and how to tell the truth of what you feel?
Thank you so much for that question. That's an excellent question. I started with journaling. I, I started with just talking to myself about things that I wanted to do. My mother, before she passed away, pushed me into journaling, um, because she knew that that would ultimately be the emergence of a voice. Um, once I started writing in like a diary or journal, I actually read it. Um, and reading what you feel adds another addition to putting words to filling. And then I sought out in my family which one of my siblings I could talk to, who could I holler at that's in the house? Who would be listening? So I paid attention to my surroundings. This brother was running the streets, this one was out, this sister was always on the couch, so I would sit next to her, start engaging with her, talking to her. She became an asset for me because she would engage in a dialogue with me, and therefore I could start sharing some of my insecurities and things that I thought, and she would counter it and tell me, "Well, I don't think that about you." And then she introduced me to some of her college friends, and it just became a kind of a network. Um, and so I just started with journaling and, and really putting my feelings down and going back and reading them and trying to just identify where I was in a school setting. I also sought out teachers that seemed to be interested in me. You always come across people that just seem to have that extra heart specifically towards you, um, and I leaned into that. A lot of the times, we lean away from that out of the fear that it may be, you know, it dangerous or we have something to lose. But I actually leaned into a lot of the teachers that seemed interested in me, and they were able to provide different perspectives of what they thought of me. And then therefore, it allowed me to see myself through other people as well. I hope I answered that.
You had a quick question.
Yeah, and just briefly to the previous comment, uh, and, uh, from the gentleman that just spoke here, uh, I didn't want to gloss over it. I think it was important because, uh, a lot of people are frustrated and people talk about Ward Eight or, or Ward Seven, but more Ward Eight. But accountability is everything. Accountability is everything. Elected officials will do things, say things, make you believe things, but you have to do your homework. You have to, this room is full, to this ward's credit. There are city council meetings, boards of education meetings, there are communications, there are reports. With the Freedom Information Act, Public Information Act, everything that is done and said is accessible and transparent. The most important thing, though, is to get out and get to these meetings, ask these questions, and be vigilant. Nobody can do something to you unless you let them. And as I tell my kids, the nut will not come to the squirrel. You gotta get out there and get it. Okay? And this lady knows, this is one of the most activist, aggressive advocates of the people, and I know she lets nothing go unquestioned.
And that's what we want to hear from next. And by the way, don't forget to vote. That's a preach. Okay? Don't forget to vote. Go ahead, write it.
Hi, I'm Joe Patterson with Parent Watch Incorporated, and Sometimes, you know, that description of aggressiveness stopped my funding, but I don't care. We talk so much, the script and all of the things that exist, but we not, we're always looking at something's wrong with our community, something's wrong with our families, something's wrong with our children, but we're not working towards the goal of system, system change and the manifestation of this, of, of our families and what systems have done to us for decades. Even with the hospital thing, we're working against that because our children go to the hospital and you call the police instead of calling DBH or, or calling organizations like ourselves that can address our kids. We have a lot of titles. I love when Dr. Muhammad comes to our session, she said, "Forget about doctor. That title, forget about it." We're the first clinicians in the neighborhoods and the mamas on the blocks and all of those. We're the first clinicians. So until we create better family systems, to work with the entire family and recognizing that we don't need to be saying that violence is the norm in our community, because it is, but it's not just because of our community, it's because of the manifestation of decades and decades and decades and failures of systems. Now, holding our intellectual elite, um, persons, you have to begin to recognize and honor the natural
We're, we're running out of time.
No, no, no.
No, we, we really are. And I want, and I want, and I want our panel to respond, so please.
Okay, Dr. Martin, I'm not running over, but, but you don't know I waited. She asked me to wait, and I waited. And I'm not trying to Bogart anything, but we have been sitting here for hours. I respect my panel, but a lot of richness is out here too.
Okay, so make, make your point, please.
So my point is, is that what are we gonna do in our leadership roles to integrate lawyers, doctors, and judges and, and clinicians, to work with the natural and informal resources and help demand from funders to fund those that are down here in the work? That's the question that needs to be asked.
Okay. Anybody want to respond to that? Thank you.
Yeah, I think she's right on point. I think we're fragmented and we're in all these different directions and there's very little collaboration, and that, that is a challenge to bring people together out of the helicopter to the ground where there is action. People don't have conversations with each other. The question is leadership, Harold. And if people come together, it's not a question of what to do, it's just the leaders coming together and bringing their visions. People are already doing that. We can do better, and I thank you for that comment.
Anybody else want to respond?
I would add to that by saying, um, it, it is an interesting concept and it's needed. A lot of the times, you find that those grassroots organizations are not leaning into the black expertise. So these, you know, the community is not going to Howard University. They're not going to, you know, those individuals, and therefore, sometimes their stories get hijacked and the research gets hijacked, and you end up being an individual on the ground doing the work, but it's just to give the rhetoric to someone else that can switch it and use it in a different way. So I really think that, um, we, again, coming back to that topic, have to really understand the word tribe and what it means to, you know, really get along, you know, get to be one. Even in the room, the decisiveness and the sense of just the discussion, there's so much anger, there's so much history in this sort of place. But again, we don't have enough time to talk.
You know, I want to just add something because we have
Real quick, because I've got one, I want to
Just one second, because I want to tie into this connection. We're from different cultures and different experiences, but too often, there's this black-white thing that's a figment of our freaking imaginations. And so we don't collaborate and we're, we're a nation of different communities, religions, et cetera, and the same thing that you are experiencing, I can tell you that they are experiencing. And we, we have this
And we, we have this divisive, incredibly divisive, toxic, contaminant thing going that's ridiculous. And so I think we need to think through that as well.
Go ahead, Ms. Bro.
I just wanted to say, though, that so many white people are completely ignorant of the history that your community has gone through. I was horrified to learn that single mothers during the same time period, I'm a single mom, I'm not harassed because I'm a single mom, and yet, I did walk away from religion, I did walk away from some other institutions that I didn't think helped me, but I learned that black mothers in the same time period, they could be picked up as, and lose their children because they're working, so therefore they're neglecting their kids, but if they're not providing for their kids, they can also lose their children. So there are definitely levels that need to be brought forward for people to have a much clearer understanding of the history of what's gone on before you can even begin to change these institutions. I will also tell you that many white people in society are very afraid of change, and so they resist. They resist the changes in the institutions, they resist the changes in education. We have got to stop this prison pipeline. It starts in kindergarten and younger, and we have got to stop that. I worked in elementary education a number of years, and I can tell you that it goes on from early childhood on up.
Thank you, Ms. Bro. I, we want to, want to end the, the comment section with this young man right here, want to hear from the young people, and then we will wrap up the program. Go right ahead, sir.
I'm Corbin Flaherty from Archbishop Carroll with the Jim Vance Media Program. My, my question is from Mr. Temple. You spoke about conflict resolution. How do you feel like it should be taught to the youth? Because I feel like too often, my generation thinks that violence is the answer when it's not.
He did ask you.
I think he thought, his name was Temple.
Oh, are you talking, this gentleman here? Mr. Temple?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I think you're right on the point. I mean, I think we, we, it's an instinct. I mean, violence can only lead to hurt, physical harm, but I think the real answer is communication, and the gentleman was kind of describing it, and, and that we have to learn to talk, and, and the power of communication, starting with how we speak-
I'll give you the words.
-and then how we write, and all that starts, young man, with what? How we think.
I want to have you all thank all of our panelists here for this, this incredible brain trust, which has been really, really a great participation for them. Thank you so much. I also want to thank you for coming and participating in this discussion. Dr. Stephanie Myers, President Dawn, Dawn Myers, Chair Marcus Hughes, co-chair, and also Chief Peter Newsome. I want to thank Sir Lillian Green, Christian C. S. Sutton. And I would also like to thank our sponsors, the Jim Vance Media Program at Archbishop Carroll High School, Trusted Inc., Positive Change Foundation, in collaboration with Black Women for Positive Change, the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, the National Black Nurses Association, Moms Demand Action, the One Hundred Brothers, Saint and Street Fighter Foundation, and of course, we would invite you to continue this conversation because as the sister said here, this is a room of richness in ideas and thoughts and questions, and so we want you to come and participate in this conversation. I want to also thank you for having me come down and participate because this also gives me more insight, if I can say that, into what's happening here at the grassroots level. So thank you so much. I want to also bring Dr. Cherie Ward up to speak briefly. Dr. Ward?
I'm Dr. Cherie Ward, the producer and the project coordinator for this event. Did you have a good time this afternoon?
Yeah!
Now, that doesn't sound like you had a good time this afternoon. Do you think the conversation was thought-provoking? Then let's raise your hands to that. I thank you all for coming on behalf of the positive organization for change and Dr. Stephanie Myers. We also invite you to continue the conversation. We have a wonderful reception right across the hall, so we invite you to partake of that. Instead of my closing the program, Mr. Temple and everybody's been talking about our youth conversating, how we speak, so instead of me delivering a closing remark, I'd like to bring up one of my former students, also the Jim Vance Media Program here at Archbishop Carroll High School. Give those young people a round of applause. Those are also my students. And my last student to speak with the evening is Mr. Christian C. S. Sutton.
How's everybody doing? Thanks for everybody that came out. I'm a student. I earned my associate's degree this past May. I'm continuing my, furthering my education to get my bachelor's in business management. Shout out to Mr. Lyrical, shout out to Gabe, shout out to Rashid, but shout out to everybody, the whole panelists. What I can say, to touch on what they said, just be extension. This is what I do, give back to the community, homeless, whatever it may be, just to be a role model. This is why I speak every day, to be, be extension, be a role model, be a project example that they can see, but everybody has to be highlighted, you know what I mean? It has to be young people like me highlighted every day, and then, just to show that, it's people out here like me all the time, but yeah, and just have to be collaborative, connected together, like, that's a daily thing. So shout out to Chad as well, shout out to everybody that came out to support me. Had its peace, I created, that's the title, "The Resilient Product Has a Voice," and it goes something like this. "I've been making significant steps, but it still feels like I'm overlooked. A young impressive scholar with phenomenal lectures that's more captivating than a catchy incompetent hook. My characteristics surpass a rook. You don't have to give me the opportunity. I'm carving my way in without a push, heading in direction towards a life that's above conditional. Domination is an attitude, and coming in second isn't even considerable. Resources are minimal, surroundings are pitiful, so much chaos that I corrupt your goals from becoming visible. This is why I'm on a quest to make luxury habitual. I didn't ever face a challenge that I couldn't manage. They always try to take you off your balance when you possess more than talent. I prevail in over every underhanded tactic just trying to leave me damaged, just working the brain of lavish to my advantage. Early on, all I wanted to do was put a ball in the rim, but now I'm claiming to defend it. Jim, for what I spark with a pen, I'm writing for the ones that's not destined to win, whose chances are slim, and judge before they even begin. I just hope my messages demonstrate what you can accomplish if you come from within. From vicinity polluted with heavy misery, less victories, devious and evil activity, followed by non-existent stability, we're making it past twenty-one, it's a common history. My upbringing was ruled by tons of negative imagery, but I still didn't let it stop me from seizing our inner serenity. I'm a devoted humble thread that's highly cerebral, that's striving to just behave from hateful to peaceful. My intentions is mainly advocating for equal, reverent commitments lie in favor of suppressing the evil. What I'm encouraging is verbally lethal. These announcements are not here to mislead you, just look at me as a passionate gifted individual with plans of building a platform to unite its people." Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Wow. That's what I want to say. Wow to the panel, wow to the audience. Thank you, Christian. Dr. Cherie Ward, thank you very much. You've really done a great job as our producer today. And thank you, yes, let's give her a round of applause. And we have a fantastic production team in the back here that have been filming all of this. This event was filmed live on Facebook. I've been getting emails from people watching the Facebook, making comments as we've been going along. So one of our goals, as Black Women for Positive Change in collaboration with our Good Brothers, is to really try to find a way to communicate these messages. Our overall mission is to change the culture of violence in America and the world. Now let me say that again, because we're talking about systemic change. Someone made a very powerful comment about that. Yes, you did. Systemic change. We have to realize that this country accidentally and on purpose was established with a lot of violence in the culture. Slavery, indentured servitude, the white folks angry, the genocide of the Native Americans. We have to change the culture of violence. We can do this, people. We have to change the way people think. We can't just react to everything with emotion. So I'm, so I, I think it's been a great conversation. Thank you very much to the panel. I invite you, we are a, a membership organization, Black Women for Positive Change, in collaboration with our partners, our Moms Demand Action folks and our One Hundred Fathers. We are a team. Now, we're volunteers, okay? My husband will tell you, "Y'all do this and don't get no money," you know? But we are working together. We invite you to join us. Out on that table out there are membership forms. This doesn't happen by accident. We, we invite you to join us either as individuals or organizations and work. Dawn and Marcus came up with this idea today, and they've been working for the last few months, trying to pull this together. You can go to our website, blackwomenforpositivchange.org, and you will see two films featured up there. One of them deals with the pipeline to prison, and our panel got as a thank you gift, we've given you disc today. These films, we wrote the script, we raised the money, we hired the production team. The film that you have there, Drop, you all can see it. You better look at it fast because we're gonna stop giving it away for free very soon. But it's about the idea of a young man going to school, being frustrated, getting involved with drugs, and then you see him get arrested. And then we ask the question, on second thought, what would have happened if he had thought about it? And then we take it back to the beginning, and instead of him getting arrested, he chooses a different path. And at the end of the film, he ends in victory. It's called Drop: A Story of Triumph. Go watch that film. It's on blackwomenforpositivchange.org. We produced it a couple of years ago. You'll see a second film up there called On Second Thought, based on a true story, a love triangle. One girl, two girls pregnant with the same guy, one girl kills the other girl. A true story. When we saw that in the news, we said, "We've got to produce this." We produced it in 2013, raised the money, hired the crew, but you know what? It really hasn't gotten out there. People are so passive. So we really have to get off of our chairs, off of our behinds, I'll say it, you know? If Queen Afi was up here, she'd say it in a whole different kind of way, right, Queen? But we've got to get serious. Now, in 2020, we are considering working in partnership with our partners of shifting the discussion, because the young people have told us they don't want to be lectured about violence all the time. The young people have told us, we want opportunities, Christian. The young people are telling us, if we can get exposure to cutting-edge careers and dream, we won't be violent because we'll have a life to live for. And so we're looking at 20 and 20. Thank you, Michael Peters, for clapping. This brother here is a businessman, a global businessman, and he made this event today possible with his donation. So let's give him an applause here. We need the business community to step up, because let me tell you, government funding is very restrictive. We have been funded before, and when you get funded for a certain definition in your mission, you can't just switch gears. With Black Women for Positive Change, and we're gonna stop for our reception just in a minute here, and we're gonna do our peace pledge, but before we wrap up, when we started out, our goal was to improve and expand the middle working class of America. When we started our organization, 2008, our goal was all of these dream intellectual ideas, we were gonna do all these wonderful things, but then Trayvon got killed. And we said, you know, you can very well be talking to young people about this great, you know, opportunity, and they're getting killed in the street. So then we added the second goal. So our first mission is to expand, preserve the middle working class in America with a focus on the black community. Not exclusively, but with a focus, okay? The second mission, to change the culture of violence. So if you join Black Women for Positive Change and our Good Brothers, we are multicultural. We say black women, but we have white members. Raise your hand, white members. Sue, Moms Demand Action, okay? Raise your hands if you're a good brother. We're Black Women for Positive Change, Good Brothers, let me see, Frank Malone, Roy Myers, Marcus Hughes, okay? So we are multicultural. We are Christian, we are Muslim, we are Jewish, we are Hindu, okay? Interfaith, multicultural, men and women, and we have our young people. You see the young people here? Our millennial committee pulled this off today. In closing, you all should have a peace pledge somewhere around your seat. If you don't have it, then you get with the person who's close to you who does have it. Dr. Ward is showing it right here. This peace pledge was written in collaboration with a youth group in Chicago. We wanted to have a peace pledge, and we sent it to the people in Chicago and said, "This is our pledge." Well, the Youth Advisory Committee to the State Attorney's Office said, "Nah, we don't like your pledge. We have a different pledge." So we had an opportunity to collaborate with the young people in Chicago, and this is the result. I would like you all to stand and take the hand of the person who is closest to you, because this is what it's all about. We must change the culture of violence in America and the world, and this peace pledge is one of our ways that we want to do this. Okay. Repeat after me. I pledge to uphold peace in the name of nonviolence.
I pledge to uphold peace in the name of nonviolence.
And to work to keep my brothers and sisters safe.
And to work to keep my brothers and sisters safe.
I promise to seek the path of peace.
I promise to seek the path of peace.
And to treat others with fairness and respect.
And to treat others with fairness and respect.
I pledge to do this for the sake of humanity.
I pledge to do this for the sake of humanity.
So we can all live together in peace and harmony.
So we can all live together in peace and harmony.
All right. Give yourselves an applause. You've made the pledge. Now you have to keep it. Thank you all for coming today. Dr. Ward, thank you for all you've done, and please join us for the reception across the hall.